This panel discussion is comprised of entrepreneurs who had their plentiful ups and downs over the past decade and are now shining stars in our entrepreneurial community. Familiar faces share their stories of their most harrowing challenges. And they're as they build their companies. The panel is by Mary Ellen Slate. She's a CEO and founder at Cap. And I am so glad you're here today, Mary. Oh, Mary Ellen, I'll let you introduce the panel. Mary Ellen, RepCap is business to business content marketing agency that helps curious content owners through strategic consulting, execution, framing, and community. Before a content marketing firm, she served as Director of Content Development at Mark Brief, columnist and editor. Post. She has a master's in journalism from the University of and a Bachelor of Science in a grad from the University. She can never resent people about her job at cocktail parties. Mary, take it away. I'll be back at the end of the set to just.
Awesome. Thanks. So thanks for having me. It kind of surprises me that Brew learned that it was 10 years old. It was sort of 2011 because that actually is when my business started right after that. And I had no idea when I got here that that was brand new. So, you know, 10 years ago, we were all new entrepreneurs ourselves, the people that are on this, this panel, myself included, and it has been quite the ride. So excited about this panel. A few housekeeping items before we get start started. First, I want to invite you to think of this as a safe space. And I know that expression gets maligned in some circles, but what I mean is that I want this to be a place where our speakers, panelists, and guests can bring their whole authentic selves and share them. And in order to create that kind of space, we all have to be committed to respectfully listening to each other and considering each other's perspectives, even if it's very different from your own. So I want to like just encourage you, if you hear something and you're like, oh, like just take a moment, listen, and let's, let's support each other. Second, I wanted to let you know that we will be saving the last 10 minutes to take your questions. So please submit them via the chat function and we will get to as many of them as we can. So now I'd like to introduce our panelist. So let's start off, we got Trevor Reeves, who is currently the head of growth at Canucks, but you know, has been involved in a number of startups in Baton Rouge. I think you've built and sold a company now. So you've got an interesting perspective on that, running that high growth operation. And now you've got a new one. I got Kristen Rushing. Some of you may know her as Kristen Morrison. She's the owner and account director at Red Six Media. Paul Dietzel, who is the founder and CEO of Anecdote, and Nanette Gray, who is the founder and CEO of Lemonade Creative Marketing. So let's welcome our panelist. So I'm going to go through, I got a few questions. I think the first one I want to ask each of you is I want you to go back to late 2011, right? So back when Brew first started, back when in many cases your businesses first started. What were you doing in November 2011? And I'm going to start with you, Trevor. What were you doing?
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, back when kind of all of this started, my career just started off the ground is I just finished college. I was actually working on a new startup. I just kind of left the company and started a new online marketing company. And I joined the LBTC where I actually worked right next to Kristen and Red Six Media, kind of right down the hall. I just kind of started figuring things out, had big goals and aspirations, but uh, yeah, I mean, it kind of was the beginning of where we're at now.
We were so, so young then. All right. And then that, what about you? What were you doing in 2011, November 2011?
Oh my, Lemonade started in September of 2010. So we're just over a year old trying to get everything figured out. I mean, I spent, Trevor's making me feel old because I had already spent like 17 years in corporate America at that point. And I was finally transitioning from the corporate life to the entrepreneurial and startup life. And it's a, it's a whole different ballgame. So going from a steady paycheck every two weeks and benefits to now figuring out, okay, how am I going to feed my kids? So in November, I was still trying to figure out how I was going to feed my kids.
I was wondering that. I know because you and I are a bit older than some of the folks on this panel. And so, and I was also a mother already when I started my business. What was that like for you? Like, how old were they?
My, my, actually it's my son's birthday today. Turned 20. Yeah. So.
Congratulations. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Josh. Back then, my son was nine and my daughter was seven and it was really exciting for them. I remember having the first office, I'm sure at Forest Boulevard. And after school they'd come and it'd be like they'd play hide and seek. And I made them a part of it early on. I was thinking they would continue, but they've since decided they'll be teenagers and not, not pursue the company business, the family business, but it, it had a share of challenges, but it was also very rewarding as well.
Kristen, what were you doing? I think Trevor teased to that a little bit, but tell me what was going on with Red Six in November of 2011?
Well, I was quitting my bartending and waiting tables job in 2011. So when we started the business in 2009, Red Six Media is actually play off of Red, the red stick. There were six owners. We started, we were all classmates and started the company, not really planning on it until the week after graduation. We kind of decided, you know, we can, it was 2009 economic downturn. So we decided we would create our own jobs. It's not something in the management school of mass communication at the time, you know, we weren't really tall entrepreneurship or those opportunities. We were really preparing our resume and your portfolio to go get a job. So I know the business school teaches those things, but we didn't really think we could create our own company. And it was the week of graduation that, you know, we came together and said, we can take what we're doing in our capstone course and maybe run with this. You know, a lot of us can't get jobs right now. People are trying to go to portfolio school and pay another $50,000 for higher education, when I think we should be able to make some money. And so we started our own company, which Nanette, to your point, um, we've always had a lot of people tell us, oh, we admire you for just jumping in at such a young age and starting something like this. And I was like, well, it's kind of easy. We were used to eating ramen noodles and being broke. We came right out of college. Whereas other people who are at a company and you may have kids and a family and you have to walk away from benefits and a 401k or whatever it may be, that to me is admirable. That's, that's courage. So for us, it was easy. We had our computers and we had our creativity and we were naive enough to do it. So, um, in 2009 is when we got started and in 2011 is when we had two of the six original founders decide to step away and look for other opportunities. Decided it wasn't the right fit for them to stay in Baton Rouge and run this agency. So we restructured, which was tough. It was one of the hardest things looking back in the past 11 years that we've done. And we, we made it work. And I think something worth noting is we decided that the three of us that would stay, we were going to be equal owners. And that took us a long time to get to that, two weeks of negotiating. But um, that was one point I wanted to talk about today, if anybody has partners.
Oh yeah, I have questions. We'll get to that one. First, I want to give Paul a chance. What were you doing in November 2011, Paul?
Yeah. So I was actually, I was splitting time between Baton Rouge and Los Angeles. I was finishing up a second master's degree out at Pepperdine. And we had started Anecdote similar to Nanette. We had started in September 2010. And we really had just kind of gotten the minimal viable product out the door. We'd picked up some of our first customers, probably had a few dozen by the end of that year. It was just Judy, which most people also know as my mom. And also me and Tyler, and all three of us are still with the company now. And so it really, you know, thinking back to it, a lot of the same principles and truths that existed then still are very present and very strong today. And at the end of the day, it really, you know, it's been, it's been a blessing. We feel grateful for, you know, the, the moments that I woke up in the middle of the night thinking, how the heck am I going to pay for all of these people or for this or that or whatever? To the moments where we looked at the graphs and said, wow, we're profitable. You know, it's, it's been a lot of fun. I look forward to the next 10 years.
Cool. So I'm going to kind of roll back here. I'm actually going to start with you on this one, Kristen, because you started to allude to this. So I want you to think about over the last 10 years, like what decision are you the proudest of? Like, what did you do that you were just like, wow, I can't believe we did that and pulled it off?
Well, I would say probably hiring, just to make that step to really invest in hiring whenever you don't necessarily have the budget. We had a really, we had a two or three, just really strong years, year after year. And we were, again, we started our company right out of college. So we got, we were hiring, um, for the first five years, we'd hire people right out of college because A, they, you know, can come in at a starting salary, which we could afford. And B, that was our comfort level. We, we could manage people that were right out of college because we knew what, we were three years older and had three more years experience. But we got to a point where business was coming in really quickly and we couldn't keep up. And we found ourselves not being able to hire and train and still manage the work and be the employee, be the manager, be at all levels. And um, we knew we needed to hire people with more talent. And we knew that that would cost more and again, would put us out of our comfort zone. How, how am I as a 30 or a 25 year old supposed to manage someone that is maybe 50 and has worked at places? One of our employees came in and he had worked at Hallmark, you know, how am I supposed to, especially in our field of, you know, creative? It's an opinion, you know, this is a good, this is good copy or good design, or this needs work. And so we were a little bit nervous about managing people that had decades of experience on us. And so we finally, you know, we knew we had to do it. So we just kind of jumped in, we interviewed some people and we started hiring in all departments. And I was just really proud of, I will speak for my, you know, my business partners. They hired some creative talent with, like I said, a lot of experience and it was never for one second awkward on, you know, feedback. It's just our team collaborates and we were very open. Every opinion is a good opinion. It helps build and you know, I think that it just organically happened. And I think the people that came in that were older than us enjoyed being kind of a mentor to us in their own way. So it, that, that's something I'm really proud of is making that move to just, you know, just invest, make the leap to say, hey, the money may not be there right now, but if we invest in the right people and build the team, the work will come. And um, and just, I say managing, but really just collaborating with people in a way that they feel respected and they know that their creativity and their opinion is valued. So it brings a lot of good work to the table.
Cool. Trevor, what about you? What's the thing that you're the proudest of?
I would say it's been becoming comfortable with risk and being able to jump on the different opportunities that have come my way. You know, so often, you know, even myself, but a lot of people that I've come across in the past that like, oh, I really want to start that new company or I want to do this new thing. But you know, I don't know, the, the stars aren't lining up or I have a really good job and I really don't know what to do. And for me, it's like, I haven't really had like real jobs for a long time. It's mostly just been from kind of startup to startup, which there are always ideas and a project until like they're not. And then things actually get legs and sometimes they don't. But I mean, I've essentially not had a real job for like 10 years and it like, it just keeps working out and I tend to make more money every year. And it's like, I've been able to build a career out of just kind of starting some, you know, new companies and, and having some successes and some failures. But really be, being comfortable with like, not knowing if in six months I'm going to be working on this and if I'm going to have a stable job. Because I feel like if you're, you know, you work smart, you work hard and you, you know, at least have like kind of a path of what you're trying to do, you're going to make it work. You're going to have success. You may bang your head against the wall for a while, but eventually you break through.
You know, it's funny you say that. Like I started my business and this was at the end of 2011, after getting laid off from a corporate job that I loved, right? So there's no security anywhere, right? And the thing I told myself when that happened, it was three weeks before Christmas on my daughter's birthday. I was in the middle of this horrible divorce, had just moved cross country like back home. You know, and then I lost the job, right? And I knew, I mean, it was just business, but at the same time it really stung and it was in the worst possible moment, I felt like personally. And luckily I had somebody who kind of cheered me on. I said, no, 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 this is the best time to start a business. You can't fail. And I was like, oh, yeah, your kid will starve. Like, thank, thanks for the motivation. But I think that whenever we think about risk, like we often think that the job is the safe play. And like what I decided in that moment, there was, if I was ever going to be like busted on my ass, you know, three weeks before Christmas on my daughter's birthday again, I wanted it to be my fault. I wanted it to be my decision. And I've felt pretty good about that. Like that hasn't happened, right? Again, so I'm, I'm with you. I'm with you. It's like, what, what is risk? What is risk in 2021?
And I feel the same with people that, you know, do have real jobs and have careers is like, if you're, you know, you don't, you're not happy with what you're doing and you really want to do something else. Like it's not that hard to leave that and go find something else. Like every, all of the people that I've had in my network that, you know, something happens and then they've got to go find a new job. Like it always works out well. I mean, they.
Yeah, take a chance. Take the chance, you know, like find a new job, go work somewhere else, change careers. Life is short. You got a story.
Of invention.
Right? All right. So what are, what are you the proudest of, Paul?
I mean, I think really I'm the proudest of the people around me. I wouldn't be able to be where I am today without the partners, without the investors, without the team members, without the customers. Our team has made it through a lot of ups and downs and has stayed committed to our principles as a company. My grandfather always said, uh, there are no office hours for champions, right? And you know, the early years at Anecdote, uh, you know, we, I think it was that, you know, we won customers because we answered people's calls and their text messages and their emails 24 hours a day. I think we, we were answering so many messages that I was literally answering emails and phone calls in my sleep and didn't even remember answering people. People would be like, well, I asked you that the other night and it was a great answer. And I was like, I have no recollection of that at all. But you know, I think, you know, we get a lot more sleep than we did 10 years ago, but our team, you know, I'm proud that our team still follows those same kind of guiding principles. We've codified them actually in kind of the last year or so, we call it the anecdote way. And so, you know, that goes from, you know, we, uh, you know, we lead by serving, we grow through continual learning, we succeed through commitment and discipline, we achieve through persevering, and we last by building trust. And I think that's, that's been kind of a core, a core component of our, of our company, of our customers, of our partners, of our shareholders is trust. And doing the right thing and having people's back and looking out for people, whether it's necessarily in your best interest or not. There's certainly been times in the course of our company where, um, you know, myself or other people in our team have had to make decisions that maybe didn't even help us the best. But was the best thing for the team and was the best thing for our colleagues and our team members. So I'd say that, you know, the people is what I'm most proud of. And I can say that because I have nothing to do with all the talents and great things that all the other people did.
Well, you were smart enough to bring them around though, and, and nice enough to keep them. Right? You didn't run them off. That's like, that's winning. That's winning. Um, Nanette, what about you? What are you the proudest of?
Well, before I get to that, I was going to mention, my story is similar to yours in that I was a part of a corporate layoff in 2010. I mentioned it in my bio, but I was in the pharmaceutical industry. I had a very good job, company car, all the perks and benefits. And when my company laid off in 2010, it was a crossroads. Do I follow my passion for marketing and start the business I've always wanted? Or do I take the, the normal route and get another job? And so that's when I said I was going to turn the lemons of losing my pharmaceutical job and make lemonade. And so that's when I started the company. And I always figured, just like you said, if things don't go right, I could always go back and get another job. But if I don't take the opportunity to at least give it a try, I'll always live with that regret. So one of the things that I'm most proud of is the first big client that we got, which was Baton Rouge Community College. It was an opportunity that they gave us a little job. And then we did well on that. And then another opportunity came for their Bill Welcome Fest. They were going to give out embroidered beanie caps to all of the students. Well, looking at the weather forecast, it was a really bad storm that was forecasted for the entire country. And so I had to move the order from New Jersey to Houston because I said, well, if push comes to shove, I could always drive to Houston. Well, push came to shove and after the ice storm cleared, I drove 609 miles round trip to get them their order at the end of the business day as promised. And that was the opportunity that started a very profitable and successful partnership with our then largest client.
You can call that the, the lemonade way. So wow, what a, what a great story. Oh, all right. So like, I'm going to ask the flip side of this question. All right. What's, and I'm going to start with you, Kristen, because I know you have good stories and you like to tell funny stories. What is the like dumbest, silliest, most embarrassing thing that you did? Like the thing that you still cringe about in the last 10 years?
Um, looking back, I mentioned we had six owners and I remember one of our biggest clients in the beginning, um, we went for a meeting in Lake Charles and we decided, I mean, this is just lack of experience, you know? We all went, we all suited up and went to this meeting. And looking back, that was just hilarious because there is no time right now where six people would ever go to a meeting for it's, I mean, maybe a creative pitch or some. Really can't think of one where six people go, but all of the owners went and that just maybe looked a little amateur for six people to show up for a meeting in suits. But, um, we did that and that, that makes me laugh to this day. We have a, we have a picture of us standing outside of a LaBerge when, uh, we actually got the client. So it worked. But we had an event and we're all standing there and just, I'll look back at that picture and I'll laugh because it showed, you know, we just, we weren't that busy and we were like going to put everything into this one client, which again, it worked, but, um, you know, you don't, you don't ever want, later we figured out, we thought we were, um, giving the client, you know, priority that they appreciate us having the team there. But looking later, we learned, you know, I think it was our consultant who, she was our consultant, but she also was a, is a client of ours. So one time she said, in a meeting where she was the consultant, she said, I want to tell you guys something. As the client, it feels expensive. And I know what you guys are charging. I know that you're doing it to have, to show extra, you know, customer service to the client. You're not really charging for six people to be there, but as a client, it feels expensive. And we were like, wow, that totally makes sense. She knew that. She's our consultant. She sees our numbers on the other side. Other clients don't know that. And so we realized, okay. Took us three years to realize that we don't have to have the whole team at every meeting. We became very profitable the next year.
Right? Oh man, that reminds me. I was once, I also run an agency, right? It's a little different. We have a different sort of specialty, but I was once in New York and as part of this agency, all hands. It was at monster.com before they got bought and we all walked in and they had like their big global agencies and there were probably three dozen people in this room. And the CMO at the time walked in and he looked around. One of these people was like billed for a thousand dollars an hour and had come from London. And he just like looked out and he goes, oh, look at all those billable hours. It's like, sir, you summoned us here. But yeah, like I, yeah, I bet y'all, I bet y'all just looked earnest. You're looking enthusiastic.
A lot of it had to do with, you know, we didn't have that experience. So in order for us to come back from a meeting and make decisions, it was helpful for everyone to be there. We didn't. One thing that was interesting about Red Six Media is, uh, we started right out of college with, with six owners, but, um, nobody had previously even worked at an ad agency. So yeah, we had industry experience. I worked for the Daily Rev sales and I'm an account manager. So I had four years of, you know, account management experience, not in the same way, but, and everybody had a job in the field, but nobody actually worked at an ad agency. So I think, um, and that was, you know, Red Six Media was the inspiration for the student incubator at the LBTC where we were, because they saw us take the first two, three years and really just have to learn our business and, you know, spend two months on a business plan and then create all these operations and process. We, we just didn't know what we were doing and we knew how to do good work. So we were able to get work in day one. But all of the other operations, the business side was piecing it together when we had time. And again, you know, I started bartending and waiting tables. I had a, I had a really good job in college, made good money and then graduated, start this company. And then I'm like, oh, we're not going to pull any money out of the company for at least six months to a year. We're going to put everything we make back in. I don't have any, I didn't save any money. So I had to start waiting tables and bartending. So get off work at Red Six Media at five, go straight in, wait tables, bartend until two. You know, clean, get home at four, wake up the next day. So that was some hard times.
Where were you? Where did you work?
Bright side bar and grill, hole in the wall. Good times. And our, my business partners, um, would, would leave and come there. So it was just great to, Trevor, we had plenty, a lot of the people at, you know, in the student incubator would end up there. And we had a lot of good conversations out there on the patio drinking, you know, drinking some beer and talking about work. So that was, that was fun times, learned a lot.
Yeah. So Trevor, what about you? What's your, uh, what's your dumbest thing that you would say you did? What's your most embarrassing decision?
Um, I would say I had a really big conference. It was like, I guess five years ago, a really big conference. And I was going to be speaking at this event. And it was probably about a thousand people in attendance, which I didn't realize is going to be quite so big. And the night before I really didn't take it very easy and it was pretty early in the morning. And so I'd gotten very, very hungover and abombed about the first third of the speech. Really bad. And then, uh, like I, I finally started having to think some blood rush back to my face and then, uh, it pulled it together a little bit, but it was, it was pretty rough.
And look, you're still here. You're still here.
It comes down to the preparation and making sure that you're, you know, you have prepared for the event. You know what you're going to be doing and talking on and, um, learn my lesson. I will say that of, uh, stuff a little more seriously.
Paul, what about you?
Oh man, there's more than I could, I could probably do a whole lecture on it. Our first year, uh, this one's not as bad, but I, I learned quickly from it. I think I wasted like 25% of the capital that we had in our first year on a bad hire. Which taught me the valuable lesson of make sure that the people that you're hiring are the people that you really need to hire. But I think the most, the thing that I still cringe over, um, is I had an experience where, uh, and I'm very just cut and dry on email and responses and stuff, because I don't like to waste time and I like to just make sure I'm getting the people, the information they need and then get past it. And I thought in the, the email system that we were using at the time, that I was making an internal comment to a vendor that had requested some stuff for us. And my response to my team that I thought was my team was, I think this is a waste of time. This would be a waste of money. And, and I mean, I went on and I was just like, I sent it and I looked back and I was like, oh wow, that did not go to my leadership team. That went to that person. Anyway, they graciously responded back and they're like, well, I appreciate the direct feedback. And I was just like, oh man, I still, I still, that one still causes pain in my bones.
We call that radical candor now, people pay extra for that. That's a thing. That's a thing. You were just ahead of your time. Oh, Nanette, what about you?
Well, this is just a cringe worthy story. Um, I'm a hugger. I, and the pandemic has wreaked havoc on my huggability. But it was approaching Christmas and we had the UPS driver event and she was bringing our packages and I had something that I needed to ship. So it's right before Christmas. I'm happy to see her. So she reaches towards me. And so I excitedly reached back towards her and then she looks at me like, what are you doing? And I was like, I thought you were reaching to hug me. She said, no, I was reaching for the box behind you. I, I then was like, oh my gosh. Um, but I realized at that moment that not everyone is a hugger. And it made it a little bit awkward when she would come to the office in subsequent days. But anyway, it was, it was quite a cringe worthy moment and I wanted to fly away with Southwest, but that was.
But they would have hugged you.
I know, but she didn't even give me a hug. I mean, just a little, but it's okay.
That's too funny.
I was, I was in a leadership course one time and, um, it was an intimate small group that we met once a month for a while. So we'd all gotten to know each other and we were very open and candid. And we had this discussion on handshake versus, you know, body language or whatever, and hugs came up. And everybody in the room, they're like, yeah, no hugs. Like you never hug when you walk into a conference room or a meeting. And I'm sitting there like, I'm such, and I always walk in, I'm a hugger and I hug everybody. And they all looked at me and they're like, no, you're joking, right? And I was, and in that moment I was just mortified. I was like, no, I was like, for 10 years I hugged everyone. And they were like, no, I catch myself. And now I've paid attention to like body language before a little bit. I still do hug a lot. Um, they're like, not the first time you meet somebody. I'm like, yeah, they're, I'm like, yeah, the first time a client comes up, you know, I'll give them a hug. And they were just like, you can't. So I'm still. That makes me happy. Nanette, a virtual hug to you.
Oh, maybe one day we'll be able to hug each other again.
Yeah, never again. Good, good thing we got our hugs in.
Right. Um, I am also a hugger. So, but, and I have similarly, I've kind of like, I tried, I wish we had little buttons where we could say hugs, no hugs. So, um, all right, let's talk about COVID, right? I didn't want, I deliberately saved this question for the end because I feel like we could have this whole session about COVID. But you know, most of us have had to rethink the way that we do business in response to this pandemic. And I'm just going to go real quick. I want to know, uh, tell me like, what's the biggest change that it had on your business? Like, how did you respond? And Nanette, I'm going to start with you because I know that you made some pretty big pivots, like in adapting to this market. So.
Well, as you know, Lemonade is a branded merchandise marketing agency. And so we sell branded merchandise for conferences, conventions and trade shows. So.
Mardi Gras parades.
City girl, baby. But when the pandemic hit, it, everything was canceled. So overnight, basically 90% of our business went out the door. And at that time, it was a very stressful time because again, how am I going to feed my? And at that time, it was a very stressful time because again, how am I gonna feed my children? My children are greedy. I keep referring back to them. Cause they love to eat. But um, so at that time, it was like, how do we move forward? And that's when I decided to pivot towards providing P P E. And it was a market that I wasn't fully uh, familiar with, but there were some areas that were crossovers from what we had done before. Um, and that presented a lot of opportunity for us, um, because we were able to fulfill some demand with Exxon Mobil, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, Turner, Aptum. We got a lot of opportunities with companies we'd never done business before. Because we decided to do the pivot. And so um, there's a saying that I love that says, not all storms come to disrupt your life. Sometimes they come to clear your path. And I honestly feel that way as, as it, um, as a result of the pandemic, it cleared the path for opportunity that I didn't see coming. And it's, you know, even though it was a horrible thing on one hand, it's had a positive impact on our business.
All right, Kristin?
I would say for, you know, our service, our people, that's our, what we sell, the creativity, the word strategy. And so um, prior to the pandemic, you know, everybody wants to work remote. You know, people, people, we tried to do some like once a week and it just, you know, we thought about different ways to do it. And we said, you know, we just collaborate too much. We're, our conference room every day, all day is booked. Somebody's in their meeting. So we, we know, it's just important for our team to be together and we didn't really ever adapt to a, a permanent remote work schedule for anyone. And then this happened. And if you would have asked me prior to the pandemic, can we all go work remote? No. I knew that our, our quality would suffer. And I have been completely shocked by how we have not missed a beat. And I think a lot of that does have to do with the team that we have right now. We had been together for a while and we, you know, everybody's strengths and weaknesses. And you know, how everybody likes to work. And so that, we did have a benefit of the team being solid before this pandemic hit. But I've just been very impressed. And now I'm like, you know, do we even need an office? Which is crazy to think that we went, I went from, you know, just months. It's a completely different mindset. But um, it's been hard because you know, my favorite thing about Red Six Media is any day of the week when we were at the office, you could walk out at lunch and people chose to eat together. And you know, family that eats together stays together. And, and it's just, we have the best little team and there's about eighteen of us right now. And uh, I know a lot of people who at their lunch break, they like to go home or take a nap or just get out of the office. And our team really likes to eat together. They pull the tables together. And everybody's eating lunch together. And during those times, you talk about your life and you know, you may know somebody's mom is struggling with cancer. But then, you know, you forget about that because you're working and we're, we have a very stressful deadline driven environment. But when you eat lunch with people every day and you hear what happened last night, and you're just reminded of the struggles and everybody's, you know, their kids, their parents and just what's going on. That helps you when you go back to your desk and when you're with that team. You wanna work for each other. You look out for each other. You may understand that they're having a bad day or like, I'm gonna take it easier. I'm gonna take that off their plate today. So, I miss having that daily lunch with everyone, but we have found ways to keep that culture going. And we have some fun virtual happy hours. And we do one thing every month on the sixth of the month to celebrate Red Six Media. We've, we've done like secret sixers where people bring gifts and we draw names or, you know, we, for January, we got on together to share our New Year's resolutions. And we find ways to kind of pull it together. But that's been the biggest challenge for us is just to keep that family environment and the day to day.
What about you, Paul? How has it changed the way you do business?
Uh, yes. Interestingly enough for Anadote, um, we, we've been a fully remote company for the past five years. We've been eighty percent remote since twenty-ten with employees across the country. So I, I think the biggest thing that changed or didn't really change, the biggest thing for us is that, you know, it, this past year gave us the opportunity to serve, you know, people essentially in our country when they've been at their most vulnerable, right? We've been able to give back in ways that um, you know, we've, we've certainly been proud of and, and helping, uh, you know, give money back uh, into communities and different things. And also um, just be able to work with our customers to help make sure that they're not missing a beat. Um, have also fielded a lot of calls from friends, not only in the Baton Rouge community, but also communities across the country that were like, hey, you've been remote for like ten years. How does this work, right? Uh, you know, cause we, we've done like virtual game nights on uh, you know, online and uh, different things. And um, so I think the biggest thing for us is it's just increased our ability to serve um, the communities that we already serve, right? Cause our, our platform, Anadote is, it's a fundraising platform. We work with churches, ministries, nonprofits. Um, you know, schools, colleges, all across the country in all fifty states. And um, especially during these times, right? Um, you know, you're seeing schools close at a rapid pace across the country. You're seeing organizations close at rapid pace. And so we've been able to really utilize um, the success of the past ten years to be able to give back. And to be able to even lower our, lower our prices multiple times over the past year while still increasing uh, revenues. Um, so we've, you know, I feel blessed that we've been able to, to help as many people as we've been able to help. It certainly, I think has had an impact also on our families, right? So each of the families across the country. Cause we're in multiple jurisdictions and multiple states. Different states have different laws, different orders, different leadership. And so just navigating that has been interesting uh, in trying to make sure that our people have the resources that they need in their communities to continue their work, even though it is remote. Yeah.
All right. Trevor, what about you? And then we're gonna go to our last question, which actually one of our um, attendees asked what was going to be my last question. So it's perfectly timed. Trevor, you and COVID.
We've, we've been lucky in that we're in kind of a recession resistant industry. People still like to smoke cannabis regardless of uh, what your situation is. But I, I'd say the, the biggest issue is kind of what Kristen uh, was talking about, which is the team dynamic of, we were kind of remote in kind of in person, kind of, it was, you know, come as you go. But the, just the ability to bring everybody together, um, we'd have like a company offsite a couple of times a year where everybody comes in. We had to cancel those. Um, we, you know, for those of us that work in the Bay Area, I mean, we were in the office, you know, three, four days a week. And then being able to go see clients, going on trips and all that's just been, you know, come to a halt. And so it's caused, you know, some issues and in one, being able to like visit with our clients and build those relationships in person, which, uh, it's always been a value add for us is coming on site, getting things going. And now without that, it, it definitely makes the selling process a little bit harder. Um, and then additionally, just like the team dynamic of keeping everybody close and getting to know each other beyond just the professional environment. Uh, it's been tough, but we've tried to incorporate things like, you know, quasi mandatory happy hours to just get everybody together. Um, having some more like, you know, company wide meetings, things like that, uh, weekly to keep everybody on the same page. So I think that the, you know, COVID has really helped a lot of companies, like big and small. Understand that you absolutely can still be productive remote and you can have this type of uh, work environment. I still personally prefer in person at least three days a week, uh, but I think this is gonna be here to stay for quite a while.
And something to add, Trevor, like I think maybe, I didn't even really think about this honestly until you're talking and I'm reflecting on this. But um, people probably appreciate their jobs more now than ever, you know, seeing what's happening in the world. And we have been very fortunate to have, we've not had to lay anyone off or, you know, decrease pay or benefits or anything. And we're so thankful for that. And I've had um, I've had employees text me like a couple of weeks ago, uh, one of our employees is out on maternity. And she just sent me this really sweet text and was like, hey, I'm watching the news this morning and just wanted to thank y'all for my job. Like we have such a great place to work and I'm, I've never been more appreciative and just seeing everything is so hard to watch what's happening around us. And to know that I can wake up and return to a job is such a blessing. And I appreciate y'all. And that was probably the sweetest text I've ever received, to know that people just.
That is, that is really nice. That, that is like a testament to the way that you're leading the team and the way that you guys have thought about how you've grown the agency. And that's tough. Like you should, you should give yourself a little bit of applause for that. Cause agency life is hard. It's hard. It's hard on people.
Here where we didn't feel that confident. Whenever this first hit, it was scary, you know, that we were, my two partners and I were on the phone every morning, every night, just every day with something different. And do y'all remember when this happened? You thought it was gonna be a couple of weeks? And then you're like, wait, maybe a month or two? I remember we packed up to leave the office. Everybody was like, wait two, like, are y'all serious? We might be like two weeks at home? Or like, yeah, just prepare just in case, you know, and who would have known? Look at this, you know, so.
All right. So we've got five minutes left. And so I'm just gonna go real quick. I'm gonna ask you all the same question. I'm gonna go Paul, Trevor, Nanette, and then Kristin. And you can answer this question. What do you think the next ten years of entrepreneurship in Baton Rouge is going to look like? Like what does it mean for you, for your company and for the city? And Paul.
I, I'm not sure about the next ten years. I can tell you the past ten, the past ten days have pushed forward like twenty years. You know, I, I think that every single day that we move forward uh, in the Baton Rouge community, in the New Orleans community, and all the different communities that we, we serve in. Um, we're seeing that the uh, the advancement of technology, the, the driving of innovation uh, is, is moving at a much faster pace. And I think that what we're gonna have to see is um, more partnerships with our schools and, and colleges and universities uh, to help bring people from all communities in our state. Um, and give opportunities for all people in our state so that we can uh, you know, lift up ideas from, from all different places. I think what we've learned uh, in the past ten years is that great ideas come from anywhere. Uh, they can come from anywhere. Um, and so I think the next ten years, really it's gonna be um, I don't have a crystal ball. I, I think that it will be um, fast paced. I think it will be, uh, we're gonna have to relearn what it means to be social, uh, because it's different, right? You know, you're not going and, and sitting uh, down on Third Street and hanging out with people until late in the evening. Uh, or, or at least if you are, right? People are wearing masks and you can't see if somebody's actually smiling at you or if they're mad at you. Right? Like, so I, I think that we're gonna see a, a, a rapid change of socialization and how we interact with people, both technically, digitally, in person. Um, and I think that we're gonna have to just be, be able to, to learn quickly and adapt to that. I think that's gonna be key.
All right, Paul, you gotta learn how to smize. Like, you gotta learn how to do the smize. So they'll know that you're laughing. All right, Trevor, I know that you uh, you don't live here anymore, but I know that you've still got a lot of uh, relationships and connections. So uh, tell me, what do you, what do you see for your business and for Baton Rouge in the next ten years?
Um, for my business, there's no telling. I mean, I can't tell you what's gonna happen to us in the next ten months. Um, but I can say, I think there hasn't been a better opportunity for some of the tier two and tier three cities to have kind of the same opportunities as some of, as things that have been kind of exclusive to the tier one cities due to like the relationship factor. So it was a big eye opening experience to me is moving, moving to the Bay Area and kind of seeing like why this place is so successful. Well, it's just because their proximity. I mean, these people are all just like all around each other. They've kind of built this engine that uh, you know, continues to bring success. And so you've, you've seen other pockets of that in other places in the country, like Austin has been one. I know that, you know, ten years ago, when we kind of started working with Brew and all that stuff, like we looked at Austin as a city that, um, you know, was the, the up and coming, what we were trying to model after. And uh, now with COVID and how everybody's gone remote, I mean, people are, you know, moving all over the country now. Uh, you have people, you know, leaving California like crazy, cause it's so expensive here, um, and keeping the jobs. And there's so much opportunities with remote work. And I think the same can be said for, you know, entrepreneurs and starting businesses. Is I don't think there's been a better time to be able to find clients across the country, because everybody's just used to a remote. And it doesn't really matter where you're located. You can say you're anywhere. Um, so I think that right now, especially in the next, you know, year or so, um, before things start to transition, maybe back to, to a little bit more in person. There's a huge opportunity where if you can find remote strategies for sales, marketing, all of that, um, as well as finding like employees and hiring, you know, it's really flattened out the, you know, the competition. Bless you.
All right, Nanette.
Yeah, I would agree with what Trevor's saying. Um, it's, the, the future is, is definitely looking a lot different post-COVID than it did prior to COVID. Um, but the thing I love about Baton Rouge, I moved back here. I lived away in the Chicago area for, you know, over a decade. And I moved back here because I love my, my city. And I think we have such a thriving entrepreneurial culture. You have organizations like Brew and Louisiana Economic Development that do so much to help support, um, you know, from startups to mature, to, to growing and thriving businesses. Um, I just really think that there's a lot of positive that's on the, on the horizon for us over the next five to ten years. Um, cause I mean, just with our company in, in itself, you know, looking at year over year, we've doubled our sales from last year to twenty-twenty. And you know, we're, we're, you know, projected for very, very aggressive growth this year as well. So I just see the community as, as being very supportive of the entrepreneurial culture. And I think the future is bright.
And then Kristin, you get to close it out. What, what's going on for the next ten years in the, in the red stick? And what about for red stick?
I don't, I agree with everyone else. I don't have too much to add as far as Baton Rouge. I very much agree with everyone. Um, for Red Six, I see growth. We've had a, we had a really good year and we are building on all of our clients right now. And then we're just adding a lot more. You know, we have a ton of work coming our way. We're so blessed for that. And I think it has a lot to do with our team. Just, we worked so quickly. Looking back, I remember feeling like we were losing time because again, we thought, we didn't know how long this was going to last. But looking back, I'm like, I can't believe how fast we were able to pivot and with strategy and creative and just make decisions with our clients and, and move. Uh, we had a couple of clients that had their best year ever, which was, they were reflecting on the end of the year and just saying, I feel bad that in the wake of the pandemic, this is happening, this is, you know, like I love the story you used about the storm Nanette analogy there, because that's what it was for them. So we had some, some really strong end of the years for our clients in such a hard time. But my message to everyone would be, you know, be as bulletproof as possible, because what the future looked like is unknown. And who knows what, what's going to happen next, but build that, build your team. Recognize where your weaknesses are as a person and as a team and as a company. And just be, find the partnerships so that whatever happens next, you know, you're well rounded. And uh, that's what I can, my business partners are just amazing. And I think they were able to take, I, I don't do as well with stress as they do. They like, they like to work under pressure. So um, they just really led the team in a really hard time. So.
So I just realized, we actually have a few more minutes. I thought we needed to end at ten fifteen. So I was being very aggressive. Um, we actually have a few more minutes and I have another question that I'm gonna share from Danny. And um, you know, Chris, I'll let you pick up from this one and then we'll kind of reverse back. What new skills have you learned or what have you learned about yourself since becoming an entrepreneur?
Um, that I do like to slow down, that I don't like to have plans every weekend. It's been nice. You know, we, I'm a, I'm a new mom. I have a one year old. So um, obviously, I mean, everybody's heard these stories with COVID and we've all done a ton of webinars. But it was a very challenging year, but being able to be in my, right now where I'm at and my living room's right here, watching him learn to crawl, learn to walk. No working mom can say that they saw every moment like that. So um, I think it's just helped me change and recognizing those blessings. And uh, knowing that everybody's life looks different. We've managed very uh, one-on-one, very individually this year. Everybody's life is different. So not everybody can work nine to five. People are dealing with sick parents, children at home, whatever it may be. So um, just being able to slow down and, you know, give everybody a break. And it's, you know, I think everybody understands that a little bit more this year.
Paul, what about you? What are some things that you, skills you have acquired or things you've learned about yourself in the course of this entrepreneurship journey?
I'm doing a better job of delegating uh, things out of necessity.
The hardest. It's the hardest.
So many hours in the day, but I, I think that um, you know, one of the things that always, the advice I always give to people, which is so simple, but is to not waste time, uh, partially because I don't like to waste time. And I, I think back to, to college, which is a fading memory. Um, and, and I think, man, I had so much time. Like what, like, and I was a workaholic in college. I didn't date, like I wasn't dating people. I was like, I was just working, right? And I was like, man, but I had so much time. And then now four years ago, I found my wife on Instagram and cold, cold called her. And then we got married ten, like ten weeks after we met. Uh, and then now four years after that, we have three kids. Our, our, our brand new baby was born like eleven days ago. And so we've got three under three. And I think that now I look back to myself, whenever I was looking back to myself, thinking about college. And I think, wow, I had so much time. It's, time is a reoccurring theme that uh, it seems that the, the, the further I march through life, um, the less time that I feel that I have. And uh, so I just, you know, I think that that has been the, the most stark lesson of life. Uh, you know, one of my dear friends and mentor, and actually my first business partner in Anadote, Lord Cook, uh, passed away last year and had a number of other friends, both old and young. Um, friends in their twenties, friends in their, you know, thirties, old, older people in their eighties and nineties, uh, friends. uh, that we've lost over the past year due to COVID and due to other things. And I think that it just, it just makes you think, right? It makes you think, hey, look, everything that I do every day, I want to make a difference. And I want to make sure that I'm helping people. I want to make sure that what I do isn't wasting things, wasting the resources that I've been given, wasting the money that I've been given, wasting the time I've been given, because none of us are guaranteed tomorrow. And, you know, while COVID is, is in the minds of everybody, um, there are just as easy ways to die. I could walk out my, my door and get hit on the street, walking in the mailbox, um, just as easily, right? And, or I could die of a heart attack or a brain aneurysm or anything else, or, or, you know? And so I think that the biggest thing to me, the thing that I've learned is, you know, while maybe as, you know, whenever I was younger than I am young today, uh, that I would maybe make an excuse or say, oh, well, if only I would have this or only that, then maybe this could have. But I think that now I look and I'm like, you know, at the end of the day, all that is, is doing wasted more time, you know? And so and, and to me personally, at the end of the day, really the only thing that matters to me, all these things and the people that I help and all the different things. Nothing else in my life matters except for my relationship with, with Jesus. And that drives everything. And maybe that gives me a perspective on, on the things that I do. But that, uh, I think that gives me perspective because I think that the worst thing that you can do to me is take away my life, which kills my time. Uh, but even then, if I've, if I've made a difference here and I've, I've helped as many people as I possibly can and I've, and I've been kind to people and, and made a difference and I trusted the Lord, uh, then I think it all, it all ends up.
All right. Yeah. No. Okay. Now it got me thinking, Paul. He said about preach, I was like preacher Paul, Kristin, you meant preacher Paul. All right, Trevor. Coming after that.
Not, not near as heavy as that. Mine, I, I would say the biggest lesson that I've, I've learned, uh, something, I mean, I'm still working on and always trying to, to do is, is focus and staying focused on, you know, one thing at a time. Whether that's one business, one opportunity, one client, being present in what you're working on and really like limiting your context switching as much as possible. Like that's something that I'm always struggling with, especially in, you know, a, a business where you're wearing a bunch of hats and you, you know, are running a, a team, but you're having to kind of go in and out of doing work yourself. Is that context switching has a toll and just changing what you're thinking about. And being able to focus as long as you can on specific set of problems or a specific business or opportunity really enables your ability, I think, to waste less time, like all the saying, but also to do as best of a job that, you know, you're proud of. Otherwise you'll just do kind of half ass down everything.
So just a quick follow-up to that. I get the sense that you're a guy who comes up with a lot of ideas, right? Like, I feel like it'd probably be really easy for you to be like squirrel, squirrel, squirrel. So how do you focus? Like, how do you like decide like what's worth pursuing and like what you have to like set aside? Because I get this intense feeling of regret, like when I have to put the things aside, like, how do you do that?
And I would actually say that I'm, I don't come up with as many ideas I would like. I just, you know, a big part of my career has just been like networking with other people that do. And so I just come across other people with really good opportunities all the time. And it, and so like, that's one facet of it. And really just being able to say no, I think is one of the biggest skills you can have of like, nope, this thing that I'm working on now is, is the, what I'm choosing to focus on for whatever reason that is. Um, it may not seem like the best opportunity relative to all the things in front of me, but it's something I've chosen and I'm going to make this thing work. And being able to say that day in, day out, I think is the differentiator between the people I've met that are very successful versus those that are not, that they are that squirrel, like, oh, well, this one seems like a better opportunity. I'm going to go work on that. Or, or this, which I've done a lot in my career and it's, you know, you know, come back to bite me, uh, a few times. But being able to kind of stay in, you know, your mindset and in even inside the job of like, you know, when you have clients and you see this other opportunity or this new big feature that maybe you can build. But it's going to really split up your focus from what you're able to do right now. Like that's, there's a cost to that. And so understanding that cost to your focus, I think is really important to be successful.
All right, Nanette, last minute is yours before Wendy comes back to join us.
All right. Well, I think one of the things that I've learned about myself is that I'm more resilient than I ever thought possible. As a, an entrepreneur, um, sometimes people see you where you're at today and think that you instantly got there. But I think each of us can attest to the ups and downs that this journey has taken us. And so the resilience, um, especially this year, I think is one of the things I learned about myself. And it's, it's like really helping to live the lemonade life, you know, when life hands you lemons to make lemonade. And I, I think that that, um, that's what we all should do is, is try to make lemonade.
Awesome. Mary Ellen, if I might really quick, just to, to piggyback on Trevor really quick and because I know Kristin and Trevor, uh, I, I feel like it would be an injustice to, to go through Brew 10 without bringing up somebody that was a, a great entrepreneur and somebody that we all loved, uh, that was at every event, I think, man, you couldn't escape him. Sean Simone, uh, 10 years ago, uh, great entrepreneur. Made an impact on a lot of people's lives around the state and around the country. And I think I just want to, I want to make a comment that especially in this time when people are remote, you know, for the people that aren't used to being remote, check on your friends, check on your family, check on your employers, your, your employees and your colleagues and stuff. Make sure that they're okay. Because during this time when everybody's separated, it can be really easy to get depressed and get down, especially if you have, you know, different things going on. And so just love on people, give them digital hugs. Nanette, thank you for that. And, you know, just, we as a community can, can overcome anything that's thrown at us. I think our state has seen that time and time again, from Katrina to the floods in Livingston to, you know, to Lake Charles that got hit super hard. And all the different communities, we've overcome many things. And I think that there's nothing that we can't do together. But just a reminder to reach out to your friends, reach out to, to their people, make sure that they're okay, because life can be taken in a moment and we might not even realize that, that people are going through hard times.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I often think about Sean, honestly, and like, we really, I don't believe that we would have this. Like what sense became and like, and just his early enthusiasm for this, this work. I, yeah, no, I think about him like just sort of randomly going about my business. So thank you for, for bringing him up. He was a, a good dude. So, all right, Wendy, welcome back.
It's fantastic. It was great to hear all your stories and, um, it was fantastic to get you guys together. And I am honored that y'all spent your morning with us, um, reminiscing and then sharing some vision for the future. So, yeah, pardon? Yes. So, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, um, right now we're going to switch gears and get y'all ready to go on to our next session. In the meantime, do be, do make sure that all of you guys attending, that you're taking advantage of your networking. Visit the lounge or get your one-to-one meeting set up. And don't forget to plan on your rest of your Brew schedule to join a session. Just remember to first press register and that'll make sure that it's on your own personal schedule. And then when it's ready to, um, launch, when, when the session time starts, then you'll be able to enter the session. But do make sure that you register for a session first. So, uh, next up is, um, Genevieve Silverman. And she is our CEO of Nexus Louisiana. And she will be talking about how innovation shapes a city. So joining us from Theater Baton Rouge is Genevieve Silverman.
Thanks, guys. Bye.